I'm on now.
I'm on now.
Should be unmuted, can you hear me?
I can hear you Mike, can you hear me?
Yep. I'm good, thank you.
Happy, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. We'll get started in just a minute.
All right, good evening everyone, I will call the meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors to order, I will note for the record that it is July 8, 2024. The board did meet an executive session this evening where we discussed with regards to litigation matters, six zoning hearing cases and their status and updates. One personnel matter which was the collective bargaining agreement with regards to the police contract. With that being said, Mr. Neese, please call the roll.
Here.
Mr. Alteri.
Here.
Ms. Roberts-Lightcap.
Here.
Mr. Russo. Mr. Russo, you're muted.
You want to try Ms. Chanlis?
Ms. Chanlis?
Here.
And currently, Mr. San Francisco is not on.
Okay, but we do have a quorum, Mr. Neese?
You do have a quorum.
Perfect, and you want to state who is here from the administration?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, your solicitor, engineer, and manager are here.
Perfect, thank you very much, we'll now move down to the moment of silence. And we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Section 5, can I get a motion 5.1 to consider the agenda as presented?
No, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section 6 is public comment for agenda items only, if there's any members of the public who have anything that they wish to say with regards to an agenda item, please go up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I will state too, if you're here for any of the hearings, you'll have your opportunity to speak during the hearing as well. But if there's any other agenda items that anyone in the audience is here for tonight, this is your opportunity to speak on it before the board takes any action on it outside of the hearing items. Okay, seeing none, we'll move down the minutes, 7.1, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the June 24, 2024 meeting?
No, moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis, is there any board discussion?
I'm here, I'm sorry, I was stuck on a different page.
A little note for the record that at 7:17 Supervisor Russo joined the meeting, didn't have that for the minutes. So again, motion was made by Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis to approve the minutes from the June 24, 2024 meeting, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section 8, drone presentation, we will now turn it over to Officer Colin Crowe, Newtown Township Police Department for the presentation.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name is Colin Crowe, I'm a police officer with Newtown Township Police. I'm also a federally certified remote pilot, which is a fancy way of saying I can legally be paid to fly drones. I'm presenting a presentation on us equipping a UAS program, and this is just a quick overview of that. I believe it puts us in a unique position for our township, as well as those surrounding us to be able to assist in not only matters of law enforcement, but able to assist the township as a whole. We have about 40 capabilities listed here, this is not everything, but this is just a overview of what we can do, as you can see, it's township-wide, so it's not only police, but it's fire, public works, areas of our school, environmental areas, and special events that we're hoping this program is able to help utilize. The drone that we're looking at acquiring is the DGI Mavic 3T. Some of the specs for that, it weighs approximately two pounds, 45-minute battery life, usually three batteries that come with that, that's optimal condition, so clear skies, low wind. Omni-directional sensors, which provides us obstacle avoidance, and multiple camera systems, that's giving us a zoom camera, thermal camera, and a wide-angle lens. Our thermal camera, as you can see there, it's good for any heating conditions, recognized for not only our fire department, but police as well, search and rescue, locating people and animals. As I said, for our fire department fighting fire with the thermogenic capabilities of that. Zoom camera, this provides us an opportunity of safety without compromising detail, that picture there is a power line viewed from approximately 15 meters or 50 feet, zoomed in on that, providing safety to not only the aircraft, but the operators as well. Our wide-angle lens, as you can see, gives us a greater vantage point, expanding scene safety, scene security, and situational awareness. Some quick projects that I've already done with my own personal drone for the township, this is our township building, as you can see, we needed a little repair to the roof, so we were able to fly up, take a quick picture, show our maintenance workers exactly where that is, precision to detail, so they're not up there wandering around wondering what the exact thing to fix is, we have that right there. We were having some parking issues surrounding the high school, so this provided a parking lot, a bird's eye view of the parking lot, approximately 250 feet AGL, which stands for above ground level. As you can see, there's about close to 40 open spots there, since we're parking around the neighborhood, we're trying to mitigate that issue to those residents there. Certifications for this, you just need a Part 107 Remote Pilot Certification, that's what I have. Officers will be required to complete biannual training, that's every 24 calendar months, and we have to register our drones every three years. Attachments, that's just additional services that we're looking to provide, these are going to enhance our capabilities, knowledge, information as well, as you see, it's things like a speaker, car charger, subscription to Lita, the Law Enforcement Drone Association, which provides us with annual training videos, things like that, that we're hoping to subscribe to. Insurance, this is a just general look at insurance and prices, liability for protecting the pilot and the township, all for protecting the aircraft system. And then a brief cost analysis of what we're looking at here, it's approximately $10,000, that is subject to change, as far as the insurance goes, we can possibly lump that in with our township of equipment that we already have, so these rates are subject to change based on some of the budget there that we're working with. And then, as well, a subscription, or our subscriptions and yearly training that we're looking at. I would like to note that this would be, the monetary value can be recuperated by callouts similar to how our K-9 unit already is assisting other departments, so we would be able to recoup some of that money fairly quickly as long as we're helping surrounding municipalities with that. Other than that, that's a brief overview, I'd like to thank everybody for letting me present today, and enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Thank you very much, Officer Crowe, I appreciate it, I just want to just ask a few questions so we're clear here, so this is not going to be, I know the answer to this, I just want to make sure it's clear for everyone else, this is not going to be a form of CCTV, like we're not monitoring people's every moves.
No, correct.
Correct. And we're only, you know, you put up there about 40
Ms. Chanlis?
Ms. Chanlis?
Here.
And currently, Mr. San Francisco is not on.
Okay, but we do have a quorum, Mr. Nice?
You do have a quorum.
Perfect. And you want to state who is here from the administration?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, your solicitor, engineer, and manager are here.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We'll now move down to the moment of silence. And we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Section five, can I get a motion 5.1 to consider the agenda as presented?
No, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Section six is public comment for agenda items only. If there's any members of the public who have anything that they wish to say with regard to an agenda item, please go up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I will state too, if you're here for any of the hearings, you'll have your opportunity to speak during the hearing as well. But if there's any other agenda items that anyone in the audience is here for tonight, this is your opportunity to speak on it before the board takes any action on it outside of the hearing items. Okay, seeing none, we'll move down the minutes 7.1. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the June 24, 2024 meeting?
No, moved. Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion?
I'm here. I'm sorry. I was I was stuck on a different page.
Good. A little note for the record that at 7:17 Supervisor Russo joined the meeting. We don't have that for the minutes. So again, motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis to approve the minutes from the June 24, 2024 meeting. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Section eight drone presentation. We will now turn it over to Officer Colin Crowe, the town township police department, for the presentation.
Everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Colin Crowe. I'm a police officer with Newtown Township Police. I'm also a federally certified remote pilot, which is a fancy way of saying I can legally be paid to fly drones. I'm presenting a presentation on us equipping a UAS program, and this is just a quick overview of that. I believe it puts us in a unique position for our township, as well as those surrounding us to be able to assist in not only matters of law enforcement, but able to assist the township as a whole. We have about 40 capabilities listed here. This is not everything, but this is just a overview of what we can do. As you can see, it's township wide, so it's not only police, but it's fire, public works, areas of our school, environmental areas, and special events that we're hoping this program is able to help utilize. The drone that we're looking at acquiring is the DGI Mavic 3T. Some of the specs for that, it weighs approximately two pounds, 45-minute battery life. There's usually three batteries that come with that. That's optimal condition, so clear skies, low wind. Omni-sense omnidirectional sensors, which provides us obstacle avoidance, and multiple camera systems. That's giving us a zoom camera, thermal camera, and a wide-angle lens. So our thermal camera, as you can see there, it's good for any heating conditions. Recognized for not only our fire department, but police as well, search and rescue, locating people and animals. As I said, for our fire department fighting fire with the thermogenic capabilities of that. Zoom camera, this provides us an opportunity of safety without compromising detail. That picture there is a power line viewed from approximately 15 meters or 50 feet zoomed in on that, providing safety to not only the aircraft, but the operators as well. Our wide-angle lens, as you can see, gives us a greater vantage point, expanding scene safety, scene security, and situational awareness. Some quick projects that I've already done with my own personal drone for the township. This is our township building. As you can see, we needed a little repair to the roof, so we were able to fly up, take a quick picture, show our maintenance workers exactly where that is, precision to detail, so they're not up there wandering around wondering what the exact thing to fix is. We have that right there. We were having some parking issues surrounding the high school, so this provided a parking lot, a bird's eye view of the parking lot. Approximately 250 feet AGL, which stands for above ground level. As you can see, there's about close to 40 open spots there, since we're parking around the neighborhood. We're trying to mitigate that issue to that, to those residents there. Certifications for this, you just need a Part 107 Remote Pilot Certification. That's what I have. Officers will be required to complete biannual training. It's every 24 calendar months, and we have to register our drones every three years. Attachments, that's just additional services that we're looking to provide. These are going to enhance our capabilities, knowledge, information as well. As you see, it's things like a speaker, car charger, subscription to lead the Law Enforcement Drone Association, which provides us with annual training videos, things like that, that we're hoping to subscribe to. Insurance, this is a just general look at insurance and prices, liability for protecting the pilot and township, all for protecting the aircraft system. And then a brief cost analysis of what we're looking at here, approximately $10,000. That is subject to change. As far as the insurance goes, we can possibly lump that in with our township of equipment that we already have. So these rates are subject to change based on some of the budget there that we're working with. And then as well, a subscription or our subscriptions and yearly training that we're looking at. I would like to note that this would be, the monetary value can be recuperated by callouts similar to how our K-9 unit already is, assisting other departments. So we would be able to recruit some of that money fairly quickly as long as we're helping surrounding municipalities with that. Other than that, that's a brief overview. I'd like to thank everybody for letting me present today and enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Thank you very much, Officer Crowe. I appreciate it. Do just want to just ask a few questions so we're clear here. So this is not going to be, I know the answer to this. I just want to make sure it's clear for everyone else. This is not going to be a form of CCTV, like we're not monitoring people's every moves.
Uh, no.
Correct?
No, correct.
And we're only, you know, you put up there about 40 uses that we can use. This is not going to be a instrument that's limited, and you did a good job of showing some examples. It's not going to be limited just to the police department. We're going to be able to use it with public works. We're going to be able to use it with the fire department, special events, environmental issues, school issues, so on and so forth. Correct? Perfect. I have no questions. What we will do, well, is there any, do you have any questions? Is there any questions, Catherine or Mike, or Supervisor Chanlis, or Supervisor Russo?
I do not.
All right. Any questions from the public? Perfect. So what we'll do is we will chew this over, and I suspect that you'll probably see something on the agenda for August.
Perfect.
Thank you very much, and look forward to, again, Newtown Township Police Department being on the cutting edge. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, section nine, reports 9.1, report from the township engineer, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening. Just a quick update. We have a few agenda items coming forth on various projects to be working on, projects that are being awarded, and that we are working on advancing. I did just want to give a quick update on the Ellis Preserve Route 3 improvements that are occurring. As of this week, as you know, there's two phases of the project, phase four and phase five. Phase four is more down the SAP end of the road. They're going to begin paving of that section this week, the anticipation being done by the end of next week, followed by paving, marking, and signal timing, so that stretch is nearing completion. And as far as the phase five, which is the Brimmore Avenue to 252 stretch, they are continuing to work on the stormwater drainage, and then they'll be proceeding over the rest of the summer with the road reconstruction. One notable item, the weekend of July 26 to 28, there will be a shutdown of Brimmore Avenue at the intersection with Route 3 to allow for the complex utility installation at the intersection. That's being coordinated directly with Penn Dot and prior notice be provided for that closure.
Eric, let me ask you a question for the phase four that's starting down at Boot Road with regards to the repaving. Where are they going from? They're going from Boot Road and repaving. How far up?
Ultimately, the whole stretch is...
I think it's right up to Ellis Avenue where they stopped, where they went down. I think it's completing what they... There might be a little bit of overlap because they've gone up to Charles Ellis on what they changed, the, where they changed the median, but it'll basically be from that section down.
Okay. And I know that there's been discussions with the with Penn Dot and the developers with regards to plantings. Are those conversations still ongoing?
Those conversations, congregations, those conversations are still going, yes. The they, the developers agreed to pay for the plantings that are in the first median that was very narrow and do that. We're in negotiation how we're paying for the next set.
Perfect. Eric, I know this...
What do you mean by the first median?
So if you go from Charles Ellis down to Ellis Avenue, that median is probably about a...
They're all pretty narrow to me.
Well, they're all pretty narrow, but that one's probably not even a foot wide. And they've agreed to do that one, and it's going to be in like junipers, low lying evergreens that would stay there. We're looking to do the same thing on the median that goes down to the SAP and also the one that's beyond SAP to Boot Road. George and I have gotten out and walked that area. They had a day where the lanes were closed down on either side, and we felt very strongly that we do not want to put staff on those medians to cut it. And so we're looking at getting plantings on those as well.
Like ground cover?
Ground cover.
With...
And then we'll come back and look at potentially something a little bit bigger than that in the future.
I don't mean to put Chief on the spot, but since he's here, have you noticed when you went with the new three lanes, when you go past, as you're headed east on West Chester Pike, and we cross over 252, and that lane change happens before you turn into like the Casey's parking lot, you found there's been more accidents? I feel, I feel like it's like almost like a speedway there, you know, across from the Acme Shopping Center. Have you seen any increase in, this is personal, and I don't mean to, I mean, I just, how I felt in that, because people think that that left turn lane, they can still travel, and all of a sudden they're speeding to get in front of everybody. I don't know if you, if that's been noted at all. I don't need to put that on the spot.
That will change, by the way.
That, 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 you can get to, that lane that currently turns into a left turn lane, that's going to be going away. There will be a left turn lane, and it's going to be all three through lanes through there. There's not going to be that shift anymore.
Although I think it's going to just shift down the Brimmore Avenue intersection because there goes back to two lanes on the other side of that.
Yeah, I, my initial concern was there's going to be a lot because I didn't feel the markings, there was a lot of notice that that lane was ending. Remarkably, there hasn't really been many accidents there. And as they said, that lane, that what is now the left turn lane will be extended all the way down to Brimmore Avenue.
Okay. Makes sense. So I jumped the gun. Sorry, Chief, I could have just asked Eric, but I, it didn't feel, it doesn't feel like it, it didn't feel, it doesn't feel like it's going to continue there. I guess the phasing it is not...
The way it's being phased, you didn't see it, but there, and they haven't done that section yet, but I think they started to work on it a little bit, and you can start seeing where that movement is. But I think we're going to have the same issue from this section from the light at the shopping center down to the Brimmore Avenue because people are still, I mean, I've watched people myself who are traveling down that lane, and at the last minute, they're kicking over.
Yep. Okay. Thank you both.
Any other? Any questions from the board for the engineer?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just for the record, Mr. Russo went off about 7:25, 7:26 somewhere in that timeframe. If he comes back, we'll let you know.
We still have Supervisor Chanlis?
We do.
All right, perfect.
Yeah, I'm still here.
All right, thank you Supervisor Chanlis. 9.2, report from the township manager, Mr. Nice.
Yes, I have just a couple of things. The Goshen Fire Department has requested assistance of our fire police for the annual county fair that, country fair, annual country fair that they have in their location. We often reciprocate with different events where their fire police will help our fire police and do those things. The reason why we need to, I just need to make you aware is because if one of the fire police gets hurt, it goes on our workers' comp. But they're volunteers who are doing that. There's no cost to the township. It's just that I wanted you to be aware.
We've done that. I mean, we've done this.
We've done this before. Yeah, we've done this for a variety of issues. The next thing I have, Mr. Werner Weiner from the Planning Commission has resigned due to a family issue and has moved out of the community, and so I wanted to make you aware of that. We also have a resignation of Mr. Gillan, John Gillan, who serves on the CDCA Board for the municipality. He represents the township. He has also resigned. He's also leaving. He, I believe he'll be tomorrow night going to the CDCA meeting, but he will move at the end of the month or beginning of August and would not be able to represent the township going forward. So both of those folks have resigned. The only other thing that I just wanted to remind everyone of with this heat is just to be checking on particularly the elderly that we know and friends we have. If you know of anybody that's having problems, please let us know so we can get the county health department made aware or if we can do something. But my understanding is this heat wave will break briefly potentially, but then be back again next week. So we know a lot of people that are really suffering. So just if you know of people, particularly senior adults, don't pay attention to the heat as it gets warm in their places. So please be checking with them.
Correct. And Mr. Nice, the resignation for Mr. Gillan is effective after, I think Wednesday, right? Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
All right. So Mr. Score, I guess we need to make a motion to accept his resignation. So I will make a motion to accept the resignation of John Gillan from the CDCA Authority Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? The only thing I'll say is that John was a great member of the CDCA. He was a good representative of the township, and he's moving away. So it's our loss, but that other municipality's gain. So thank you, John, for your years of service. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we will need a...
I'd like to make a motion to elect, what are you? Appoint, appoint Leonard L. Tierney to serve out the unexpired term of John Gillan on the CDCA.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we will now move down to section 10, payments.
Mr. Chairman, you might want to make a motion to accept the...
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Jack Weiner from the Planning Commission Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis to accept the resignation of Jack Weiner, effective immediately. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I also want to say thanks to Jack as well. I spoke to him after he sent that email, so he was a, he was a great member of the Planning Commission.
Really was. He was, he was, he added a lot of, in the short time he was there, he added a lot of insight.
Section 10, payments 10.1. Can I get a motion approving the following escrow payments? $976 escrow release payment to Robinson Landscape at 49 Newtown Woods Road for a completed grading project.
No, moved.
I'm sorry. Sorry. And also $1,037.5 escrow release payment to Michael Martin at 3713 Wyola Farm Road for a completed grading project.
No, moved again. Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Section 11, bills, 11.1. I have reviewed the bills, and I'll make a motion to approve the bills on check register A dated July 8, 2024, totaling $120,375, $120,375.23.
No, moved.
Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Section 12, developer release 12.1. I get a motion approving release number three for the Stony Knoll Land Development totaling $255,873.4 to the polling, leaving a remaining balance of $1,222,922.64.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any more discussion?
I actually have a question. With the drone presentation, Mr. Nice, is it something that we can, I don't know, does it cost us money if we, if we go ahead and purchase the drone? Like for something like this with, you know, a development, is there a way to kind of follow that, like to take progress pictures with the drone?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's definitely possible. I mean, obviously, the, currently, we're proposing two officers to be the pilot. You know, we could potentially train somebody else in the township to be a pilot, and you would open up other pilots, or, you know, have an officer go do it while they were on patrol. So I mean, that's, that would be the issue is just having a pilot available.
Just because I know that before, when we've had larger developments, this isn't one of the larger ones. But when we've had larger developments and there have been questions, like in the middle of fields, right? We, with the stormwater management, it's a tool, I'm just thinking, it's a tool that we can use to show that, you know, if there's questions of, like if there's a storm or after a storm and we see damage or, you know, in areas that we don't have, it's not easily accessible. So that's another thing we can use this drone for. So I know it's off topic, but it was just a, just a question, so.
All right, motions are made and seconded. Is there any other further board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Section 13, new business 13.1. Can I get a motion approving the conditional offer of employment to the applicant who applied for the open patrolman position in the police department contingent upon passing all the required testing?
No, moved.
Is there a second? Second. Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by the chair. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 13.2, can I get a motion authorizing the Public Works Director to coordinate the annual assault bid on behalf of the 11 Delaware County municipalities?
No, moved. Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I just want to be clarified. That includes, and I'm assuming that includes him being able to advertise. It doesn't actually say that, but it would include advertising.
Thank you. 13.3, can I get a motion approving the township solicitor to work with the township engineer, township staff in the Waters Edge area of the community to facilitate any necessary stormwater easements to address stormwater facility improvements in that area?
No, moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any more discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 13.4, can I get a motion approving the advertisement for bids associated with stormwater facility improvements in the Water Edge area of the community?
No, moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any more discussion? Mr. Nice, can you just give a brief overview of these two?
Yeah, so...
Self-explanatory, but...
Well, so Waters Edge is one of our communities that's down, most people know it more. What was the lake? Earl's, Earl's Lake, thank you, that was down there. And we have some stormwater that's coming off of the roads that are up above, that are coming down on the backside of that community. We own some property that's to the east that we could facilitate the water going in that direction. And so what the purpose of this is, is for us to go in and move that water that direction so that it's not coming in the back of these folks' backyard. And so that's what we're doing.
Any other questions to the township manager? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 13.5, can I get a motion to consider awarding the contract for St. Albans Circle Improvement to the lowest responsible bidder, Premier Contract Incorporated, a real PPA with a base bid of $310,776.50?
No, moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any more discussion? Mr. Nice?
Yeah, so this project, we actually had in the budget for this year. It did come in a little, like about twice as much as what we had planned, so it is significantly more. We would need to use fund balance to pay for that. And, but it is the project, if you recall, you can still kind of see where we painted that area with the idea is to take some of that asphalt out, put in some grass, create a walkway so that people can walk from, from one side of St. Albans Road to the other side where that circle's pretty wide as it comes out of the circle, going towards West Chester Pike, and this would narrow that down. Hopefully also would hopefully work as traffic calming, but also work as safety for pedestrians. And so we've been trying to make that area more walkable, encourage businesses to move into that area and have a safe place for businesses to be. So that's what this is.
Perfect. Any board, any further board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All is opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we're going to get down to 13.6, but Mr. Nice, I mean, Mr. Score, I've got a question for you. I don't believe Mr. Russo, Supervisor Russo has joined the call still. Is that correct?
He could not have.
Okay, so it's just Supervisor Roberts, like cap, Supervisor Chanlis, and I. Supervisor Roberts, like cap, will have to recuse herself from this because it involves Hansel Road, which she lives on. How do you want to handle this?
She does not have to. You have to recuse yourself. To accuse yourself under the Public Ethics Act, if you are going to make some sort of a profit off of this, if you're just a member of a subclass of residents that benefit from general action, that's, that's not a conflict of interest. So if you're not comfortable, you can recuse yourself, and then you would have to push this to a future meeting, but you do not have to accuse yourself.
Whatever you want to do. Would help if I described the project that would be involved on Hansel Road is actually close to, but not on your property. It is, it's a failed storm sewer across the street that we need to dig up and replace the pipe.
I mean, the idea being, many things that we do in the township are directly benefit to multiple residents, including yourselves. So there's always going to be that connection at some level, you know, seven degrees of any action taken, you're going to be connected to it. But this is not a direct conflict of interest under the Public Ethics Act.
And I don't anticipate this would be a direct impact on your property one way or the other. So what's being done is actually fixing a problem on the neighbor's property that will allow the water to go into the street, the system that's in the street. Right now, it's actually bypassing that and going, it's, instead of going right into the inlet, it's bypassing it, coming across the yard, going into the street, and then going into the inlet. Right now, it's actually bypassing that and going, it's, instead of going right into the inlet, it's bypassing it, coming across the yard, going into the street and then going into the inlet. So I, I don't think that this water's coming onto your property, so it wouldn't change that.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with it if you're fine with it, so. Just because we're going to miss and it's, we don't have another meeting this month, so.
All right. But can I get a motion approving the contract for Hansel Road, Martins Road and Valley Ford Road Stormwater Improvement to the lowest responsible bidder, Joseph J. Danielle LLC of Trainer PA with a base bid of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-four cents?
So moved.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by the Chair. Is there any further board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we will now get down to section fourteen, public hearing. You ready, Tom? Perfect. I will note that we are now at fourteen point one, the hearing is being opened at seven forty-six, and I will turn it over to the applicant who is represented by counsel, as well, as well as the most popular man in town square, Dave Trout.
Mr. Chairman and distinguished members of the board of supervisors, thank you for considering our intermunicipal transfer this evening.
I just want to make sure this, not forgot distinguished members of the board of supervisors, record there. Counsel, can you just identify your name and title for the record?
James Kenneth Butera from Butera, Bosankel and Brennan, here representing Napa LAD LLC, that'll be trading as Napa Kitchen and Wine. It's a proposed new restaurant concept that's going into the Ellis Preserve Development, a little bit of housekeeping, if I may. On the notice in the application, we had an address that was about twenty feet away from where the actual address is going to be. The, the address that, that if, assuming the board approves the resolution that we will need would be thirty-seven forty-seven Eckles Boulevard, Newtown Square. The, so my apologies on that. We know what is C eight, I think, in the, in the, on the plot plan.
Okay, so let me ask you this question. Mr. Saccor, because we advertised for one oh seven Squire Drive, do you have any concerns with us moving forward? Is it essentially on their risk, I would assume?
I don't, I don't have a problem with it. Township, I don't believe should have a problem with it. I guess there's always a chance that the liquor control board might want us to come back and address it formally in the future, but I don't, I don't think that's a problem for us.
But just to confirm again, that's going to be thirty-seven forty-seven Eckles Boulevard?
Yes. It's the same applicant, and the applicant only has one lease, and it's constructed as a restaurant.
All right.
So I have Mr. Trout here, I think you guys know him, he's developing Sedona right now, if I may ask him a few questions, and then I'll let you guys take it from there.
Yes.
Okay. Can you state your name directly? David Andrew Trout. And where do you work?
Dave Richards, do you need to be sworn in for this? Is this not?
Get her. I do. Thank you. I can sing now. Where do you work, Mr. Trout? I currently work for Sedona Tap House, we, three, two locations currently existing and one under construction in Newtown Square. So you're a restaurateur? Yes. Okay, and the one under construction right now, where is that located? That's located at one oh six Squire Drive. And indeed, we were here a little over a year ago, doing the same hearing. That's correct. For that place, right, okay. Can you tell us a little bit about what, what it is we're going to put, we're, we're seeking to get here today? So we're seeking for a liquor license to intermunicipal transfer for a license to operate our restaurant, our new concept. And what is that concept? That concept is Napa Kitchen and Wine. Okay, can you tell us a little bit about, we gave a, I passed out a menu, can you tell us a little bit about what the, the highlights of what the concept is, maybe how it'll differ from, say, Sedona? Yeah, so Napa Kitchen and Wine, very similar to Sedona Tap House, is, is an approachable, family-style restaurant with our main offering is centered around a wine and wine kiosks in our restaurant, there's a wine bar in our restaurant as well, but the restaurant really is designed to have a full, very broad eclectic menu. We have a sushi component to this restaurant, there is a tapas-style menu as well, we offer full entrees, you know, off a wood-fired grill, so fresh-cut seafood, steaks. You know, there's anything from handheld items to full main course dinners. We try to make the menu approachable from the standpoint that it could be a concept that you could dine at, you know, a few times a month and, and not feel like it sets you back too much to dine here. We're, we're certainly not fine dining, we're not seeking, you know, fifty or sixty or seventy-dollar entrees, so we think this is, is affordable for most families, but it also provides an opportunity for guests who just want to come in and experience great wines from around the world, sit in a lounge area, which is, you know, very friendly, have a couple small starters per se, and get a chance to, to drink some great wines from around the world. What's neat about these wine kiosks are they allow you to try very interesting wines that might be very expensive by the bottle. These kiosks are, am I going over here too much? Yeah, the kiosks are, are driven by argon gas, so if you're familiar with Corvin technology, right, you have a very nice bottle of wine at home, the Corvin cartridge allows you to extract wine from that bottle without introducing oxygen, so you can preserve a great bottle of wine and drink it for as long as you'd like, really, as long as that wine is still good, so that's essentially how these kiosks are styled. They'll have twenty-four different varietals. You can choose any portion you want from a two-ounce, six-ounce, eight-ounce pour of wine, and you might be able to sample some great wines from around the world without having to spend several hundred dollars for a bottle of it. Does Napa Kitchen and Wine exist anywhere else right now? The, the Pilot Restaurant, which was also the same founder of Sedona Tap House, opened in the Midlothian section of Richmond, Virginia, three years ago. Interestingly enough, it's right across from the original Sedona Tap House, the same, it's called Westchester Commons, and the restaurants have really fed off each other extremely well, very different menus, but there's a great synergy between the two concepts and, and thus our idea to open this Napa Kitchen and Wine in such close proximity to Sedona Tap House. And then do you plan on having wine events and things like that? Yeah, so we do a wine education series every Monday night. We also introduce sommeliers and, and really folks that are, are from the different wine regions around the world. We have a great relationship with folks from Napa Valley, so we will have some, some, some cred, if you will, some pedigree with, with having some great winemakers come in and do these wine dinners. I've had the opportunity to attend a few in Richmond, and they, they do a fantastic job, guests can come in and, and really experience great wine, find out about the history of the different varietals. Obviously, there's, there's tasting involved as well, and we, we pair many courses of, of different items with those wines, so they can get a sense of the region, the place where that wine's from, and we, hopefully, we have some great knowledge. About how big do you expect the restaurant to be as terms of seats, number of seats? Yeah, so the restaurant is seventy-five hundred square feet, will have roughly two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty seats inside. There's an additional seventy to eighty seats outside. Private dining will be really, is a, is a big staple of the current Napa Kitchen and Wine. We anticipate with the second wedding venue opening in Ellis Preserve, and obviously all the, the corporate presence that we have and, and all the, the new residents to want to choose the restaurant for private events. The private event space that we have designed in the restaurant, and I just will tell you, we bought a, a young lady in from Kathy Bate from California. Kathy is a restaurant designer in Napa Valley, she's actually in Sonoma County, and she has helped incorporate a lot of the vineyard style additions and elements to our restaurant that really don't exist in the first Napa Kitchen and Wine. The first Napa Kitchen and Wine doesn't, as, as she described, doesn't really scream Napa, California, and this restaurant will, so there'll be, the restaurant really is going to be quite beautiful inside, but there'll be a lot of vines inside, there'll be a lot of canopy, there'll be a lot of soft, natural wood tones. If you look at the restaurant now, you'll see a lot of windows, but there will be a lot of additions and treatments to, to make the restaurant have more of a, a kind of a laid-back sort of vineyard feel. And that's kind of what we're, we're intending here, that you come into a restaurant that's cat, upscale, the casual, you know, you, you don't have to, you know, dress, dress the nines to come in, but you're going to find a restaurant that has just great aesthetics and feel and, and vibrance. Kathy Bate. B A T E. Yeah. The, this concept does, will this concept work without a liquor license? No, no, not in this case. What percentage of sales to alcohol do you expect to serve? Yeah, so this, this, obviously, the, the menu is, is centered around great food and California vibe, so as I said earlier, there's, there's handheld component to the menu, there's plenty of fresh salads, there's a sushi component, again, you can order full entrees, fresh-cut seafood and steaks. So to, there is a, obviously, the large degree of beverage on the menu is going to be wine, and we have a prohibition-style cocktail menu as well, so some really very interesting and unique cocktails that we've designed. A few beers, but really, there's no draft beer system in the restaurant. We don't want to compete with the Sedona guys too much, but yeah, so it's, it's primarily wine. I mean, we're roughly, it's about a seventy-thirty mix still, and of that, of that thirty percent, that's wine, wine's going to consist of probably about eighty percent of that. All right, okay, good, thank you. All right, now, do you consider Napa Kitchen Wine to be a club? Absolutely not. Is there any dancing? No. Will you host live music? We have a jazz brunch on Sunday, so yes, we will, we will have live music on Sundays for our jazz brunch. How about like rock bands or anything like that? No. Hours of operation? Yeah, similar to Sedona Tap House, that's certainly not a, a late-night restaurant, our, our latest hours are on Friday and Saturday evenings, we close at eleven PM, ten PM during the week, and a little bit earlier on Sundays, generally, our, our Sedona's closing at nine, and we intend the same hours for Napa Kitchen and Wine. We'll open a little bit earlier on Sundays, roughly ten AM, ten or ten thirty, to host the brunch I refer to. And serve the brunch? Well, our, our, yeah, jazz brunch, yep. And you, you own, you have three operating restaurants right now, correct? We have, we have two, and we have a Sedona. So tell me how you treat the service of alcohol? Well, every, we, we go above and beyond the standard that the the Responsible Alcohol Management Program, PLCB RAMP, in, in Pennsylvania wants at least fifty percent of your service staff to be completed there. We do a hundred percent at every one of our restaurants, so it's very important to us, obviously, with that certification, every two years that gets renewed. We have additional certification online that every one of our employees has to perform as well, so you know, the, the standard rule in our restaurant as well, generally, most of our employees are, are over eighteen years old, but if they're under eighteen years old, they can't have any, you know, they can't, as you know, move, touch, handle or distribute alcohol. So that's generally our guideline as well. About how many people do you expect to employ? It's a big restaurant, so right now, we're, we're, we're aiming to roughly employ about a hundred and twenty folks that are opening. In addition to the, to the traditional training that the servers get, do the managers have any special training? Yeah, in addition to the, the standard PLCB RAMP server seller, certification they receive, I'm sorry, they also have to take the owner-manager course as well. Will Napa Kitchen and Wine adversely affect the health, safety, welfare morals of, of Newtown, Newtown Township? Will provide economic development? Absolutely. That's all I have for Mr. Trout right now. It's up to the board if you have any questions for Mr. Trout.
Just a couple. Hey, just a couple clarifying questions. The hours, Friday and Saturday, you're closing at eleven PM?
That's correct.
Monday through Thursday, ten PM?
That's correct.
Sunday, you are opening up a little bit earlier for the jazz brunch, correct?
That's correct.
All right, now, and I want to make sure I understand this correctly, when you said employees, how many employees did you say you were going to have?
Hundred and twenty.
I'm guessing you're having a hundred and twenty over multiple shifts.
That's correct.
Okay, so what's the average number of employees per shift?
Yeah, so generally, we have roughly about forty-five of, of the employees are in the front of the house, and there's roughly about twenty in the back of the house, so I'd say about fifty percent of that amount that I gave you will be on on any given shift.
Okay. Not necessarily a question relevant to, to the liquor license, but I'm assuming when you went through the lease process and everything, that there's plenty of space for employees in addition to the customers that are going to be parking and, and using that, again, not necessarily relevant here, but I'm sure that that calculation went in there. With regards to this, because, so you're saying, again, just clarification, this is only the, this will be the second Napa Kitchen and Wine in the United States, is that correct?
That's correct.
And with regards to the Sedona Tap House, you're also operating, that's less than ten across the United States too, correct?
Well, there's eighteen total now, and we're one of two that are opening this year. The other one's in Virginia Beach.
And is there still, will this only be the third one in the whole Commonwealth?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm getting a little bit of a Newtown Square on the map with what you're bringing in here, Mr. Trout. Okay, those are the only questions that I, oh, again, not necessarily relevant to the standard of health, safety and welfare that we have to evaluate this under, but where's the liquor license transfer coming from?
Chester.
Chester. Do you have any questions? Mr. Saccor, do you have anything you need to add into?
No, but this is the opportunity for, this is a public legislative type hearing, it's not a, you know, quasi-judicial hearing, so this is the opportunity for public to come up and make any statements or comments they have regarding this potential transfer, and then after that, you can vote.
Before we move to the public, Supervisor Chanless, do you have anything you want to ask the applicant or his attorney?
I do not.
Okay, is there any members of the public who have any questions for the applicant or the attorney? Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Donna McCole, thirty-two Surrey Drive, Newtown Square. Donna McCole, M C C O L E, thirty-two Surrey Drive, Newtown Square. C O L E, like Coleslaw. I just have a question. Liquor licenses currently are in Newtown Square, and is there a process? Do we know how many are here? I know there's different types of liquor licenses, but I'm just curious, you know, I know some other townships have limits. I think it sounds like a great concept to, for the town, but I just was curious, is there any plans in the future to just, I know we don't permit drive-through restaurants and, you know, but I'm just wondering if there's any future thoughts on to limit or to just have a process a little more defined?
Yep, so Counsel, I don't know if you want to answer the first part, if you know how many there are.
I've just looked for the hearing, and I think there are eighteen licenses, restaurant licenses, there's also, I don't know if you have any eating place licenses or hotel licenses, but I have listed your restaurants, I think there's about eighteen, two of which are at safekeeping, one of which is Mr. Trout's Sedona, and the other one is Ruth Chris's. There's about, I think there's sixteen operating restaurants in, is what I counted.
I'm just concerned that we don't have a restaurant row like, and they used to have in Delaware going down two oh two at one point, so, because a lot of those restaurants over time ended up folding and becoming something else, so I don't think that's the situation with your concept, but I was just curious if there's any, you know, forward thinking about, you know, manages, managing them or at least identifying them.
Yep, nope, nope, fair question. Do you have anything else specific to the, to the applicant or his counsel?
When do you open?
Yeah, first quarter of next year.
Any other members of the public that have a question for the applicant or his counsel? Okay, seeing none, that section of the hearing is closed. Mr. Saccor, do you have anything you need to add into evidence?
Just, we did, we do, we do have just proof of advertising, which will mark as Township Exhibits one and two. It's two successive weeks of advertising, the, the most recent of which can't be less than seven days, so we have one on seven days and then one five days before that, that constitutes two successive weeks.
Seven days and then one five days before that, that constitutes two successive weeks.
Uh, counsel, do you want the menu in as part of the record too or no?
Oh, I didn't, yeah, that's.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna tab this as A one and Tom, you have a copy of it, correct? All right. So if there's no objection from the board, uh, applicants exhibit A one and townships exhibit T one and T two will be admitted if there's no objection. Seeing none, the exhibits are admitted and we will take a vote. Fourteen point one, can I get a fourteen point one, the inter municipal liquor transfer, thirty-seven forty-seven Equus Boulevard?
Yeah.
Um, Napa L A D S L L C. Turn over to Supervisor Roberts.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve Newtown Township Resolution Number twenty twenty-four dash fifteen. A resolution of Newtown Township, Delaware County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approval of transfer of restaurant liquor license number R. One four nine one. One four nine one, yeah, that's right. Into Newtown Township from Chester Township. Whereas Act P L ninety, Article four, Section four, six, one, the Act as amended. Forty-seven P S, Section four, forty-four. Dash four, six, one. Which amends the liquor code authorizes, authorizes the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board to approve in circum. In certain instances, the transfer of restaurant liquor licenses across the municipal, um, across municipal. Boundaries within the same county, regardless of the quota limits provided for in Section four, six, one of the liquor code. If sales of liquor and malt or brewed, sorry.
I don't have to read the whole resolution.
Oh, after I stumbled over the first one, the first section, can I at least finish that first section?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Much or as little as you want. But I think he heard the words.
Told me that like two paragraph, a paragraph ago, sorry. Um, sales of liquor and malt or brewed beverages are legal in the municipality receiving the license and. Just do the whereas things or just go to the bottom. Now therefore be it resolved. Napa L A D S L L C has requested the approval of the Board of Supervisors in Newtown Township. For the proposed transfer of the Pennsylvania liquor license R. One four nine one to a restaurant to which is be constructed at thirty-seven forty-seven Equus Boulevard Newtown Square. Newtown Township, Delaware County, P A one nine oh seven three. The premises with the understanding that the said transfer. Must be approved at a later date by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board and. Right? And be it further resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township. Has held a public hearing on July eighth, twenty twenty-four to receive comments. On the proposed liquor license transfer and after consideration of the issues finds the transfer of the liquor license to the premises by Napa. L A D S L L C will resort, result in job creation, revenue enhancement. Dining accommodations for the residents of Newtown Township, all of which will substantially benefit the local economy and its residents. Be it resolved, Newtown Township approved the adoption of this resolution, the proposed transfer of liquor license. R fourteen ninety-one into township, into Newtown Township by Napa L A D S L L C. Be further resolved that proposed liquor license transfer is subject to the approval by, by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. I hereby, oh. I hereby certify that this resolution was adopted by Newtown Township Board of Supervisors at its meeting on July eighth. Twenty twenty-four, and that's my long resolution that I didn't have to read as much on.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Roberts. Second advice, Supervisor Chanlis, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Tom, that hearing ended eight oh nine. Tom, off the record real quick, Supervisor San Francisco is trying to get back on again. He's saying he's having difficulty getting in.
I sent him an email this, just when the meeting started. Is that the link he's using?
I don't know. He said that, uh, tried to get on, it doesn't work.
Kathy, which one did you use?
I used the one that you sent me most recently, right, right? When the meeting started.
I'm not going to hold this off. I just, if you guys want to coordinate it while we're going on to the next hearing, we can do that. So I'll move down to fourteen point two. I'll announce that this hearing is being opened at eight ten. Which is a zoning code amendment for low impact and no impact on businesses. Base businesses supervisors, I mean, solicitor, Secora.
Yes. So this is the, uh, ordinance, you've discussed it a couple of times. It's a text amendment to the zoning ordinance regulating, uh. Home-based businesses in the township currently, whether the business was a no-impact business or a low-impact business that required. Uh, folks to come in and get special exception approval, go to the zoning hearing board and incur those costs. Uh, if it's true, so this, this, uh, proposal splits. The home-based businesses into two categories, no, truly no impact where there's just. Somebody operating a desk and they don't have customers, they don't have deliveries and they're just working out of their, their house. Uh, that doesn't require any special exception approval versus low impact. Where there's maybe some deliveries, that, that some customer. Um, and, uh, that does require special exception approval. There's still a significant list of. Uh, regulations to make sure that that doesn't impact the neighbors in a negative way. Uh, this was, this, uh, ordinance was reviewed by our Township Planning Commission, which recommended approval. It was reviewed by the County, uh, Planning Department, which also recommended approval. They did have a couple of exceptions. Uh, the township staff, uh, zoning officer, myself, Mr. Nice, we sat down, looked at the concerns by D C P D. And determined that they were in fact covered, uh, by the ordinance. Uh, for instance, they said, well, maybe you want to have, uh, uh. Clarify that there's no bakeries in a low impact because that would have smells and stuff, but not allowed to have smells. And also for the low impact, uh, it's limited to professional offices by, by the, the text of the amendment itself. So they had some good concerns, but when we went back and looked, their concerns were covered. So, um, the, the ordinance before you does all that. There's some signage. Uh, 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 regulations included with those as well, with the low, with the low impact.
And this came to our attention. Um, I know you keep saying special exception, but for those who are listening either online or in the room. Special exception would require them to go to the zoning hearing board, incur the costs and go through a hearing, retain counsel. Um, correct?
Correct. And so we have a business registration program where every business in the township has to register with township. So we know what's going on in the township, where it's located, who, who's doing what. Uh, we were getting these, uh, business registrations for folks who were. Working out of their homes, but they don't have customers, they don't have parking, they don't have deliveries and, and they're doing the right thing by registering. And then we say, thank you for registering. Now, here's a, a bill for eight hundred dollars. You got to come before the zoning hearing board to get approval to do what you're. What you're doing, even though you're not impacting anybody. So this is designed to fix that problem. Uh, but if it's low impact, meaning that there is some impact, they still have to come in and go through that process.
Yeah. So a lo- long, long-winded way of saying this, this got brought to our attention from a, from a, from a resident who. Had an issue, not an issue, but raised a valid complaint or concern and now we're addressing it.
And they, they, the resident registered like they're supposed to and they didn't want to have to go through the special exception process for something that truly had. Zero impact on anyone.
Perfect.
If that changes, and that's part of our business registration process, uh, if we'd learned from a neighbor complaint or through the registration process. That there is a minimal impact, then they still have to, at shifts, they have to now come in for the, uh, regulations under the. Low impact. And then of course, if it exceeds those regulations, then they would have to stop working there and go to a commercial district.
All right. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Chanlis?
Nope, I don't have any questions.
Perfect. Uh, any questions from the public? It's T one and T two. Any members of the public who wish to speak on this ordinance change? Hey, let the record reflect, there is none. If there's no objections, township exhibits T one through T four will be admitted in the record. Is there any objections? Supervisor Chanlis?
Nope.
Seeing none, the exhibits are admitted and we will now move down to sixteen point two. I will make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh seven, um, excuse me. Sorry, sixteen point one. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh five, amending the zoning code regarding no impact and low-impact home-based business. And what I've learned from my colleague, if I will just make that motion and just say, uh. Enacted by the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, this eighth day of July, twenty twenty-four. And that's my motion. Motion was made by the chair, second by Supervisor Roberts. Like app, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And that hearing has closed at eight sixteen. Tom, you good? You want to roll into the next one? Okay. Fourteen, uh, it is now eight sixteen. We'll now move down to fourteen point three. MAP Amendment Change, Historic Property, five seventy-one North Newtown Street Road. And I'll turn it over to the Historic Commission. Ms. Cavalier, if you can just state your name and title for the record.
Um, good evening. My name is Kathy Cavalier. I'm a member of the Newtown Township Historic Preservation Commission. And I'm here representing the commission's, um, decision. Um, I can begin on five seventy-one, just.
Yeah, well, we had to break them up. So we're going to do five seventy-one first, then we'll, we'll take public comment, we'll close, we'll, I mean, we'll, we'll vote and then we'll move into the next one.
Cavalier, yes, C A V A L I E R.
I'm trying to handle that.
I mean, might as well.
I do. Okay, I'm here this evening representing the Historic Commission's unanimous vote to recommend that the home known as the James Price House. Located at five seventy-one North Newtown Street Road be included in the Newtown Township Historic Resource Inventory as a Class Two resource. Within the Historic Preservation Ordinance. The James Price House has been recognized as an historic resource of Newtown Township by the Delaware County Planning Commission's Historic Resource Inventory of nineteen eighty-four. Compiled in conjunction with the Pennsylvania Historic and Museum Commission with funding from the Department of the Interior. The current Delaware County Planning Commission at its May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four county meeting recommended, recommended the James Price. Price House be included in the Newtown Historic Resource Survey stating, quote. After reviewing the paperwork, these historic resources are worthy of inclusion in the Newtown Historic Resource Survey. They still retain their architectural and historical significance. They were all listed in the nineteen eighty-four Historic Resource Survey and due to their retained integrity should remain listed in the Township Historic Survey. Delaware County Planning Department commends Newtown Township for being good stewards of their historic resources. Unquote. History of the home, the smallest section of the Price House is located in the rear on the corner of Newtown Street and Saint David's Road. It is the original home. Uh, part of a land grant from William Penn in sixteen eighty-three. James Price acquired a hundred and forty acres of this land in seventeen hundred. Through his will, we were able to ascertain that the home was built, um, between seventeen hundred and seventeen thirty-four. As he left the home in his will to his son, John Jones and Jane Price Jones. To live in during their lifetime. Um, the architectural characteristics suggest it was built in the first quarter of the seventeen hundreds. The features include, include a one and a half story thick stone dwelling, walk-in cooking fireplace, heavy timber lintel, traces of a beehive oven. Small windows, narrow, narrow spiral stairs. I'm sorry, I didn't know if you wanted, I'm so sorry.
He's got to take down every single word that you say, not a summary.
I'll skip some of them. Probably too much. Those little features, okay, these features. I think it's old. These features include a one and a half story thick stone dwelling. With a walk-in cooking fireplace. Heavy timber lintel. Traces of a beehive oven. Small windows and narrow spiral stairs leading to the half floor room above. Two entrances on the main floor directly opposed. Uh, from each other and the foundation and basement, um, was built strong enough to hold a horse and according to a historian. Large logs for the walk-in fireplace were dragged in one door and out the other, dropped into the fireplace. The upstairs had a fireplace that's since been covered and wide random with floors. So in eighteen oh six, Joseph Lewis purchased this home from Jones. And built a Georgian-style three-story stone addition, now covered in stucco and marked with an eighteen ten date stone. And the date stone reads Reuben Edwin Caleb, it's R E C, Sons of Joseph Lewis. A portion of the house using Georgian elements indicates that he was prosperous. It has a center hall, central rear and two inside end chimneys. Arch dormers with pilasters. Windows are six over six and an eight-panel front door. Next to the house, to the south are the remains of a stone wall, which was a two-story building. This was at one time the Saint David's Post Office and General Store, built in eighteen eighty-three. The name of the post office was later changed to Wyola in eighteen ninety-one and there is a street named for that. This historic Wyola section of Newtown Township includes the Wheelwright and Blacksmith Shop, eighteen oh six, right on the corner. Wyola Farmhouse next to that, a stone farmhouse that was demolished for neglect. Next to that, and the James Price House on the corner. And across Saint David's Road, it continued to six eleven North Newtown, where the Wyola Hill property. Known as the Leadham House and Mineral Springs Farm still exists today. Across the street is public school number one on the Episcopal Academy property. This entire area was the center of early Newtown Township. And it was known as the first part of the township before the center became further up onto Westchester Pike. As required by the Township Historic Ordinance, the commission has determined that this property meets the following criteria. For a Class Two historic resource based on the history given above and should be included in our ordinance. A property needs to meet just one criteria to qualify and this property meets the following five. Property is of significant character, interest or value as part of the development, heritage or cultural characteristics of the township. Property associated with an event of importance to the history of the township. Property is part of or related to a commercial center, park, community. Or other distinctive area which should be preserved according to a historic, cultural or architectural motif. Property owes its unique location or singular physical characteristic representing an established and familiar visual feature of the neighborhood. Community or township. Property exemplifies the cultural, political, economic, social or historical heritage of the community. The property owner was notified of this request to have the James Price House included as a Class Two resource and does not support this application. Does not support this application. The Historic Commission does not agree with the assertions, um, that were made by the property owner. And based on our research, we request the inclusion of the property under the Historic Preservation Ordinance.
Thank you very much.
I should put in the, uh, the, uh, township exhibits, uh, in support of the application or. In furtherance of the application. So this was advertised in the newspaper, uh, Delaware County Times, June twenty-fourth. And July first, twenty twenty-four, the Proof Publications, uh, are Township one and two. Um, the, it property, because this is a map amendment, this property had to be posted, so that there was posting. Uh, there's photograph of posting, uh, that would be Township Exhibit Three. Uh, the Township Planning Commission did review this application. Uh, they did not. They did not risk, the, the Planning Commission did not list the reasons for its recommendation, but the, the vote was five to one against including this in the historic inventory, or, you know, including it on the historic overlay map. If, you know, I, I believe there's a couple of people here, including from the plan, from the Historic Commission, that may have insight as to why they made that recommendation. The Delaware County Planning Department, so that would be the next Township Exhibit would be the Township Planning Commission.
That's T4.
Yep, and then T5 would be Delaware County Planning Department recommendation, which did recommend inclusion on the historic overlay.
Okay. We'll move over to the questions from the board. Kathy, first off, a lot of information. Thank you for that, and thank you for the information that was provided to us earlier in our packet. It was very thorough and, and gave a good picture of this. Just one question, very minor. What does it mean when you say, and this might be something I should know as a homeowner, but windows are six over six?
Six over paint, six panes over six panes.
Okay.
Frank.
Window, well, no.
Six over six.
Okay, six over six, all right. I don't know, I don't think pillow, pillow windows have them, I don't know.
Six over six and one sash. On the double, yeah, on the doubles, yeah, that double-hung sash, six over six, some are four over four, some are eight over eight.
You taught me something there, so I appreciate that. I have no other questions. I just, I just never heard that before, so thank you.
I'll give it to you if I'm done with it. Totally, yes.
Kathy, I will, I will give you the opportunity, though, if you want to, as this listener alluded to, the Township Planning Commission, well, first off, the property owner of this, as opposed to it, we received her letter dated May 1st, 2024, which I believe was sent to the Historic Preservation Commission before you guys took your vote, which was what you alluded to in your opening statements, that you guys essentially, the Commission disagrees with some of the assertions that were in there. Township Planning Commission, as this listener noted, did vote to not recommend that. Is there anything that you want to specifically address either in that, the Township Planning Commission meeting, or if there was anything that was specific that you wanted to raise with regards to the property owner's letter dated May 1st?
No, we disagreed with the property owner's claims that the house was in disrepair, crumbling walls, all the statements, because I did go through it for their open house. It was just inspected recently, so, and it passed inspection for a potential sale. So it is, it was in very good shape. Basically, the reasons were she thought it would be difficult to sell if it was listed. But, and this was already had a plaque out front, it was, it was listed. The Planning Commission, basically, I never presented this property because they said if it, the property owner didn't agree, they didn't want to hear the presentation. I did get the other one presented, but, so I never did. So that was their one, that was pretty much a deal breaker for them.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Or comments from the public?
All right. Are you going to accept the May 1st, 2024 letter from the applicant as, or input?
Yeah, I'll add that as A1, or I'm sorry, I'll add that as, I guess, it's not the applicant, so P1, property owner one? Property owner one. And Tom, I'll make sure you have a copy of this. Give this to P1, which is the May, or 2024 letter from the owner of the property. All right, seeing that there are no questions from the board, I'll make a motion to admit township exhibits T1, the T5, and property owners exhibit P1 into the record. Any objections to that? Supervisor Chanless, any objection?
No objection.
There's also a report from the Historic Commission with some supporting photographs, which support the verbal testimony that you just received, but you might want to include that.
So I will make that HC1, Historic Commission 1, and Tom, I'll make sure you have a copy of that as well. So again, just so we're clear for the record, exhibits T1 through T5, the property owner one, and HC1. If there's no objections, they will be duly admitted. Hearing no objections, they are admitted into the record, and we will now take a vote. Okay. Point 2. I get a motion approving ordinance 2024-07 Township MAP Amendment to Add 571 North Newtown.
I know we took the app, the property owner's letter. I'm just not clear if you gave anybody else who had, wanted to give input.
I did, I asked if there was any comment. Correct, if I'm wrong, the public had no public comment on this application, and that's why we moved into the admissions of the exhibits. For 16.2, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-07 Township MAP Amendment to Add 571 North Newtown Street Road as a Class II historic resource in the historic overlay zoning district.
Second.
Motion was made by the Chair, second by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That hearing has been concluded at 8:31 PM. Tom, are you good to roll into the next one? You need a break? You're good? Okay. All right, we'll now move down, it is 8:31. We will now move down to 14.4. MAP Amendment Change, Historic Property, 3201 Westchester Pike, Ms. Cavalier. I will just note for the record that you are, you are still under oath, and we'll just continue with the, with you proceeding that way.
Again, I'm here representing the Historic Commission's unanimous vote to recommend the home at 3201 Westchester Pike that we will refer to as the Federal House. That's how the Historic Society had called it. We recommend that it be included in the Newtown Township Historic Resource Inventory as a Class II resource within the Historic Preservation Ordinance. Similar to the James Price, the Federal House was recognized as an historic resource of Newtown and included in the Delaware County Planning Commission's Resource Inventory of 1984. The current Delaware County Planning Commission, who reviewed our documentation at its May 16th meeting, recommended that the Federal House be included in the Newtown Historic Resource Survey, and I read you their quote. History of the home. The, the architecture is part of the, a big part of the history of this home. The earliest buildings and homes of European settlements began in the southeast corner of Pennsylvania. Southeast corner of PA is known for its collection of 18th and 19th century stone houses, taverns, and farmhouses. A large wave of German immigrants arriving throughout the 1700s and early 1800s brought a new cultural tradition and a unique house form that developed in Pennsylvania, the Pennsylvania German Double Door or Four-Bay House. Theorized to be a blend of English symmetry and traditional German form. It is unique to Pennsylvania, southeastern mostly, and surrounding states that are border Pennsylvania. This is from the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission, History on Architectural Styles in Pennsylvania. So in 1813, Simon Littenberg, from a family in Haverford of Coopers, which are barrel makers, bought 47 acres along Westchester Pike, Turnpike in Newtown, and built an impressive stone home in the German Double Door farmhouse style. Besides being a farmer, he was a drover and one of the first to drive cattle to the Philadelphia market from west of the Susquehanna. The house is a two-and-a-half-story, four-bay, two-pile, stucco-over-stone home with fieldstone foundation and rear additions, a one rear addition. There are two front entrances. A working farm, which this functioned as at the time, would have, a door to the farm office where a business was conducted, and then a separate door into the family living areas. The house has three stone-plastered chimneys, six over six windows, molded trim, and eyebrow windows look out from the third floor. The interior has the original random with flooring. Some has been covered with tiles. I'm not sure what type of tiles they were, but a lot of it, to be able to see, and still has the pegged beams. In the basement, there are log beams with large metal hooks presumably used for drying meats, and at one time, this was a slaughterhouse, so that was probably true. So the Littenbergs inherited the house, the son and daughter, the son of Mr. Littenberg inherited his house with his wife from Simon and raised their son Marion, who left from the Civil War from this house, served three years, and then worked at the Freedmen's Bureau, assisting former slaves in the South after the Civil War. He returned and has been buried in Marple Presbyterian Church Cemetery along with his parents. The 1870 home was then transferred over to a D.D. Smith, who was the one running the slaughterhouse on the property. He lives through the 1800s and then turns over to William Kelly, who lived in the house for most of the 20th century, and then he sells to Dr. Rufino and wife Jenny Contestable. And they moved there in 1950 through 3, raising one daughter Kathleen, who eventually inherited the home. The Contestables were active in the Historic Society. There was a plaque outside the home that they agreed to place, which we cannot locate, that's been removed, and knew most of the history of the house, and it maintained, they maintained it mostly unaltered to this day. The daughter Kathleen passed away several years ago, and she had no children, and I believe the executrix is who came to contest this application. The home sits at the entry point to Newtown Square along a main historic roadway and is a visual reminder of Newtown's early beginnings and agrarian past. Next door is the Barrel Inn. It's historic, encapsulated within the Charlotte's Restaurant. If you've ever been in there, you'll notice it right away because it's the oldest part of the restaurant. Further down is the Fox Chase Inn in 1724 that was built, and that now has been converted to offices. But it was a frequent stopping point for travelers and drovers, and then across from that's the Octagonal School, which Dunwoody cares for. As required by the township, the Commission has determined this property meets the following criteria for a Class II historic resource based on the history given. The property needs just one, and this meets three. Property is of significant character, interest, or value as part of the development, heritage, or cultural characteristics of the township. Property embodies distinguishing characteristics of an architectural style. Property exemplifies the cultural, political, economic, social, or historical heritage of the community. The property executrix was notified of this request to have the Federal House included as a Class II resource, but did not support this application, stating the historic status would make it more difficult to sell, and the building was in poor shape and not very special. We did not agree with these assertions based on our historic research and request inclusion of the property under the Historic Preservation Ordinance.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cavalier. Mr. Sikora?
What the township exhibits, please. This property, with the, the ordinance text amendment with respect to this property was advertised on June 24th, 2024, and July 1st, 2024. Marked respectfully, the proof of advertising marked respectively as Township 1 and 2, property was posted, which is attached to, as the exhibits here, the proof of posting, that's Township Exhibit 3. The Planning Commission voted five to one against recommending this property being added for the same reason.
Yes.
For the same reason as by 71 North Newtown Street, the applicant was against it, so they didn't want to hear it. That memo is attached, Township Exhibit 4, Delaware County Planning Department did recommend that it be included on the historic overlay, and that's Township Exhibit 5.
As I did with the last applicant, I will also note that the board is in receipt of the April 5th, 2024 letter from the executive, excuse me, the attorney that represents the executrix of the estate. I believe that letter had been sent to the Historic Commission before you all took your vote, because it's addressed to you.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to, I will mark that as P1. Property owner one, as I did with the other one.
And then the Historic Commission forwarded to you a report with some supportive photographs, HC1.
And marking now, HC1 is going to be the Historic Preservation Commission's report, along with associated photos. Okay, and Tom, I'll make sure you get a copy of all this as well. Couple of questions before we turn it over to the public. This property is a little bit unique compared to the other three that we've done so far with regards to its condition. Can you talk a little bit about that and why you think it should still go on the inventory?
Okay, so by condition, we can do the exterior condition versus the interior condition, so.
Talking about the full picture, both exterior and interior.
Yeah, I could.
If you can speak to it, if you can't speak to it, that's fine.
Well, I can, but I think Frank might be able to articulate the specifics on the, on that part of it.
Mr. Falcone, if you can come up, we'll have you sworn in. Just state your name and title for the record. We'll get you sworn in.
Good evening, I'm Frank Falcone. I live in Newtown Square.
So we'll get you sworn in now. Can I try that again?
Yes, I do. I'm Frank Falcone. 403 Tennis Avenue, Newtown Square.
And Frank, in addition, you live in Newtown Township. You are a member of the Historic Commission?
Yes, I am.
And I believe you're the vice chair of that board?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so if you can take it from the question that I had, just ask Ms. Cavalier and answer that.
The, the exterior of the house has 18-inch walls, solid stone, and they're, they're plastered on the inside. When I went through the building, the inside has no signs of water penetration. There's rooms that they plastered over, that they plastered over the hung and grooved flooring and the exposed beams that they had. They were, they were four inches by eight inches. So the, the building is still in the same shape it was when it started out, and there's no signs of any deterioration. There is one shrinkage crack across the back in between the, the door and a window, and it goes for about eight feet, but it's a straight crack that goes all the way across, and it just because the heads were at the exact same height, it expanded and contracted. Everything expands and contracts. There's no structural movement in the building.
And just, when were you all, when did you conduct your inspection of the property?
I looked at the inside today.
You were granted access to the inside?
I drove over today, and I looked at it. The door was open. I walked in. Maybe I shouldn't have.
Yeah, no, we're a love conversation about that. Our solicitor have a conversation with you on that one. Okay, so it's your testimony tonight that there's no structural.
There's no structural problems with the building at all. There's no water penetration. That's what would bring the water down. The side porch has water get into where the beam locked into the wall, and that is deteriorating, but that's a side porch. And that was probably built in the late 1800s.
And you walked throughout the entire house?
Yes, I did. Basement to the, to the attic.
All right. Yeah, we're going to make sure we don't do that again. We'll have, but, okay. Is there any other questions from the, from the board before we turn it over to public comment? All right, I see that there's a, a good amount of residents that are here tonight. If there is anyone who wishes to speak on this application, I ask you to come up to the podium, just state your name and address for the record. We'll do it one by one. And then again, as we noted earlier with Ms. Cavalier, we do have a court stenographer, so we're going to need you to speak, you know, he's pretty good, but just loud, clear, and just, you know, not at record speed. We'll turn it over to anyone from the public. Yeah, Frank, you can sit down. Thank you. This gentleman's going first, Mr. Glazer.
My name's Robert Hamilton, 11 Baron Road, Newtown Square. Thank you.
And Hamilton, like the president, H-A-M-I-L-T-O-N?
H-A-M-I-L-T-O-N.
I'm sorry, you're right. He was the Treasury Secretary. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He's also a big, there's a play about this guy, I think.
Clearly I listened to it, huh?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, can you just give me your address one more time, Mr. Hamilton?
Eleven Barron Road.
Thank you, sir.
Trying to, we're trying to get our mind around all this, uh, 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 is, can the owner, this, this was resold, this was purchased recently, correct? The, the, we, we, okay. Well, there's been work done. They, they removed trees and I, I was assuming that, I did hear a rumor that it was purchased. Okay. Well, this, this house is situated right on the corner. Okay. And a, a lot of the residents some of here tonight, we live across the street on Barron Road. The backyard of this, uh, um, house, this property goes, it's almost a football field long. So right, we're right across the street and we're trying to find out like what can happen to this property. If, in, in other words, who could, it, who, who decides that it's a historic, uh, class two? House property? Who, who decides that?
You want to take that?
It's what the hearing is for tonight, the board supervisors.
So if it is decided.
Recommendation from the Historic Commission.
Okay.
And then the board supervisor holds a hearing.
And that be nullified by the owner?
No.
It cannot. Okay. So, so who would, who would?
By the owner.
Who would turn it down?
So the purpose of the hearing tonight, so the way that this works is the township has a Historic Preservation Ordinance. And as part of that Historic Preservation Ordinance, there's a Historic Commission, which you just heard two representatives of speak on. The Historic Commission members are appointed by the Board of Supervisors to enact the ordinance essentially to, to identify the properties and register them as class two historic, historic properties, as well as a litany of other things that are found with inside the, the ordinance. When the Historic Commission makes a recommendation to place a property on the, uh, class two historic, uh, list, if you will. Um, the process is to send, is, is a map change. So if you look at the zoning map of the township, if like for the property that we just did prior to this, the zoning map will now show that that property is, is on part of the historic overlay district. We don't have one giant overlay that covers the entire township because the historic structures are spaced throughout the township. So the way that we're doing it is essentially a map overlay by each property. When the plan, when the Historic Commission identifies a property that they feel based off of a ten point criteria that's outlined in the ordinance that should be deemed the class two historic structure, they notify the property owner. They conduct a hearing at their Historic Commission meeting that, where they take a vote. If they vote in favor of moving it forward, it goes to the Township's Planning Commission. Uh, excuse me, it comes to us first. We vote to advertise it, which means we put it in the newspaper. And we also authorize it to go to the Township's Planning Commission and the County's Planning Commission. Both the County Planning Commission and the Township's Planning Commission are a purely recommending body. So they can either recommend or not recommend, as we're seeing in this case and in the prior case, the has, the planning commission in this situation is voting to not recommend inclusion as a class two historic structure. Again, those two bodies are purely recommending. Um, they have no authority. There's no requirement for the township or the board of supervisors to follow their recommendation. After the planning commissions, both the county and the township review it, and we then schedule a hearing. So I guess two weeks ago, we voted to advertise for a hearing, which is the hearing that's taking place tonight. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to designate or not that property as a class two structure. So at the conclusion of this hearing, as like we did with the prior hearing, the board will admit the exhibits into evidence. We will then take a vote. If there's a vote in favor of it, then it gets identified as a historic class two resource. If it doesn't get an affirmative vote, then it fails and, and that's that.
Okay. So it's getting voted on tonight?
It is getting voted on tonight. Correct.
Do I have a say in the vote?
That's what you're doing right now.
Right. But I think you need to explain Leonard, what happens when it, when it is designated. It, um, doesn't, um, there's limitations of what, uh, the historic commit, what the historic, what this does. It slow roll, like, let's say someone wants to buy the property and they want it, they take a demolition, it's for the demolition, correct? If it's a demolition permit, it has to go, it takes a, a process. I think you need to explain exactly what happens when it is designated and what this does. It doesn't make it that it doesn't, that it can't be torn down or renovated. It, um, what it does, it gives a chance for everyone to kind of slow down the process and, uh, decide if it is worth keep, is, am I explaining this correctly?
Yeah. I mean, that's one example of it. Yeah.
So if it's designated, it wouldn't be torn down, correct?
No. So that would be, I don't want to get too into the weeds of like the legal aspect of it, but that is the property owner, you have rights. The township can't supersede your rights. If we were to say, hey, this is historic, you can't touch this at all, it would be essentially a taking of your property, which is in violation of the U S and state constitutions.
Right.
What this ordinance does, if it's, if, if, if it's identified as a historic resource there, and let's say I want to change my, my, um, nope, nope, shutters. If I wanted to change the shutters.
Yeah.
That are currently black and I want to make them blue. Exterior changes of the property only have to go back to the Historic Preservation Commission for a yes or no vote. Um, and then there's an appeal process in there. If the Historic Commission says, no, we don't want you to change your shutters from blue to black. There's an appeal process that kind of works its way through. What Supervisor Roberts, like Cap just mentioned, just because a property is designated as a historic resource, whether it's class two or a class one, it does not prevent a property owner from demolishing that structure. Class one, I can.
Class one, one of the class two wouldn't.
Class two, it does, yes.
Okay. So what, what could happen to that backyard?
Because the backyard is, is there something historic about the backyard that you're concerned about preserving?
No, no.
What's your question relating to, so we can help answer that question?
What's to keep Wawa from putting talking gas pumps across from my front door?
I don't know. What, what's the property zone? Property zone residential, residentially zoned property?
Is, is it, is it residentially zoned?
This isn't to change.
I'm sorry.
This is, the purpose of this hearing is not to change the property, the commercial or something.
Brett, you have to speak up.
The purpose of this hearing is not to change the property from residential to commercially zoned. There's nothing about this to add a Wawa. In fact, it would be the opposite where you're trying to keep the historic nature of the property as opposed to making it a Wawa.
If it's not designated, if it's not designated historic, what could happen to that, to that yard across the street from me?
Whether it's designated historic or not, the property owner can come in relief from the township to do whatever a residential property.
Is it? So it's residential or?
It's a residential property, residentially zoned. So if they come in and seek, uh, a subdivision, for instance.
Yeah.
There would have to be a process to the Historic Commission to see if there's something historic about the yard itself that would prevent the subdivision. There would have to be a zoning review to see if it's big enough to put another house on there. If it's not, somebody would have to come in for a zoning relief. It doesn't change any of that. They're still, they're not changing the nature of the property to make it a commercial property.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I hope we answered those questions for you. You just state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jean Hornbach, H O R N B A C H. I live at seven Barron Road. I've lived at Barron Road all my life. I've lived in seven, nine and eleven Barron Road, in fact.
Um, and I'm sorry, real quick, ma'am, you said your first name's Jean?
Jean, J E A N N E. Yeah. Uh, well, like the other residents, I'm concerned as to what could go there, like apartment buildings or condo or something like that. Now you said it was zone residential. I thought that whole strip there was zone commercial because Dr. Contestable used to have his office there. So wouldn't that have been his own business because of him having his office there?
No, we just passed an ordinance this evening, uh, explaining the difference between a low impact business, no impact business, professional offices. Uh, there are, uh, uses where a person may have had a non-conforming use, that non-conforming use may, may or may not have been abandoned based on the circumstances. So if it was used as a, an office before the zoning code was, uh, created, it would still be continued to be used that way unless it was abandoned. There's multiple reasons why it may or may not have been used for commercially in the past. It may not be commercial now. What the purpose of this hearing is, is not to turn it into a commercial property when it's not a commercial property. The purpose of this hearing is to determine if the structure is to be preserved because it's a historic resource.
Okay. Now you said it hasn't been sold now or anything?
I have not testified, I have not made any comment on that because I don't know any of that information.
All right. So who's doing all the improvements to it? Because there was a sign out there for lease. They have the three car garage now. It looks like the refurbished that building that was there before. And there was a sign out there for lease and MG tree was up there and cutting a lot of tree stuff on the back of the property. So who's doing all those improvements if these people don't want to keep it for the Historical Society and it hasn't been sold?
So again, the purpose of tonight's here, so this board would not have any of that information. And for the purposes of tonight's hearing, we don't have any information for that because it's not relevant to what the hearing is right now. I have no idea whether the property sold or not. It's not something that the board of supervisors would get involved in with a, a private sale between two property owners. Um, the purpose tonight, as Mr. Sikora said, is purely whether or not this board wants to take the recommendation of the Historic Commission and deem it as a historic class two structure or not.
Okay. My question still is, who's doing these improvements? Because didn't they have to get permits from the township?
I think, I think what the board is trying to say is that the board does not have that information. If you would wish to put a right to know request into the office, we could provide you if any permits have been issued. But if the person has just removed some trees on the property, they would not have needed to come in for permits.
It wasn't just the trees. That's what I'm saying. The whole front of that garage has been done.
But if, and if they just replaced garage doors, they probably would not have needed permits. It, it, if they did a structural change, if they added walls, if they did something like that, it probably would have, or would have required a permit. I can't speak to who's doing the work. There may be a permit that was submitted to the township. I don't have it in front of me tonight. You, you're welcome to put a request into the township and ask for a right to know and we'll be glad to provide you if any permits were issued to that property. But tonight I do not know that answer without doing some research. We don't, it wasn't part of what tonight's hearing.
And we, the, the township does not zone specific to who owns the property. The zoning is a planning document. The zoning is property related, not voter related. Not relevant to the township who owns it. It's the condition of the property itself. Is, is your position that the property has been modified such that it's no longer historic?
No, no, I'm just trying to find out what's going along, like we're trying to find out what's going along with it.
Mr. Nice, explain the process.
Okay, great.
You had another one back here. Whoever wants to yell.
Hi, I'm Joanne Grace and I live at nine Barron Road. I, G R A C E. And, um, for forty-seven years I have lived across from a very large property. So I understand the basis of this meeting is for the house itself to be historic. But my concern is if it is, the property behind it also will be incorporated into the historical map?
So you asked, just so I can understand your question, you're asking if both the structure and the property
Yes.
get incorporated as a class two historic designation?
Yes, because it looked like two, at least two homes could easily be built there. Um, and it's in, I wouldn't even call it a yard. I'd call it like a football field. Um, it is maintained. I'm always seeing, um, the landscapers out there. But as far as the structure itself, um, although I haven't entered the property, I've looked at it from the side where Charlotte's is. And I can see it's in complete disrepair. There's, um, like a back, um, maybe porch that's just decaying with like old air conditioners. It, it looks like it's in an ice ore almost to me. But, um, I'm here to hear what, what significance if it is versus if it isn't. Would it be impacting neighbors that live across the street from that property?
Okay. So your question, so the first question, the first answer to your question is that it would be the entire property against designated. Correct? Right. Uh, and then the second question is, what's the impact for the neighbors if it's historic versus if it's not historic?
Yes.
Okay. You want to take that one or you want me to take it?
Yeah, the impact to the neighbors is if the, if the person wants, if the property owner wants to come in and change the outward appearance, there's a process that they have to go through.
Okay.
So it's going to, they're not going to be able to change the nature of that building, the outward appearance of what's there without coming through the process and you have an opportunity to come in.
Okay.
And, and provide input into that.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with, this is not a, a hearing to determine if another house could be built, if there could be a subdivision of this property.
Right.
If, if it's not a property maintenance hearing, it says nothing.
I understand.
You know, if you think there's a, uh, uh, I don't know, a refrigerator out back, there's something that you see that should be removed. That's a whole separate process.
Right.
Township say, hey, I think there's an accumulation of debris. This is to determine if the property is historic.
Yes, I, I understand that. Um, so yeah, that's why I'm here. I want to hear what you guys are going to vote and what impact that would have on us, uh, as people that live across the street from it. That's, I do understand the nature. All right. Okay.
If you were a hundred percent in favor of this building just being ripped down and replaced with something, you would be against what they're doing tonight. If you were in favor of preserving the historical nature of the building, you'd be in favor of what they're doing tonight.
Okay. I know that it will cost a lot of money to put that house, um, in, in the repair state. From what I can see. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glazer.
Nathan Glazer, thirty-five, thirty-eight Kaylee Road. G L A Z E R. Um, I was at the planning commission hearing when this issue went around. And I may ask for this first clarification because when I heard what was presented there, I drew an impression that the building was indeed in disrepair and in fact that the roof was either caved in or approaching that. And I find out that there's truth or falsity to that.
Mr. Falcon, hold on real quick. You can go to the podium, um, just because there's people, this is being recorded. So if you can just go to the podium and answer that question.
The side porch roof is caving in. The beam that went into the wall is water rotting. The main house roof has no water coming in at all. So it's, the building is in satisfactory condition. Historical commission looks at the structure of the building. The side porch has a bad roof.
Okay. As I said, at the planning commission, the, the description I heard sounded different. Uh, I support the idea that the property owner, particularly since this property is in transition, because there's an estate involved. I think should have the full flexibility to do whatever they see fit. I've been by the property several times. I have not entered it because that's frowned on, as I've heard again. Uh, and to me, it, it does not look like a property that anybody would really want to approach, you know, from the overgrowth and whatnot. Um, historical preservation is a good thing. I, I have no general bias against it. But this particular property, where it is and, and, and what I see there, um, I think it's more likely it has a future as quite frankly, as a, as a demolition that is, is being converted or preserved by some future owner. Uh, I, I can't conceive of somebody putting the kind of money in that it would take to have a house literally sitting on Westchester Pike uh, and, and residing there. So, you know, I support the idea, not because it, it's bad to preserve historical materials, but I think this particular property really doesn't fit the bill to do that. The Giuliani house down at, uh, two fifty-two, that down at Newtown Road, I think is a very different story. I think that one, there's some justification to. But this one, you know, I, I don't reside there, but I think the residents have, uh, some legitimate concerns and I would prefer, I mean, I think it would make more sense to let it go and let market forces do what they normally do with structures like this.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Glazer. Any other public comment on this application? Um, all right. So I will, uh, note.
Leonard, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, you can.
Um, so my, uh, are we, are we able to, I mean, my understanding is that the main building, the structure, uh, is, is sound, but uh, portions that were built later, like that side porch are, are an issue. Can we designate the main original portion of the building, a historic resource, without designating like the side porch so that if that is something that's in disrepair and needs to be taken down, that can be taken down? But the main portion of the building that has the most historic significance can be preserved? Or at least can be subject to the process that allows that to, to slow down a bit?
So before we even get into that, Supervisor Chandler said, if you're fine with, so. So before we even get into that, Supervisor Chalice, if you're fine with, so there seems to be a lot of confusion over what is occurring tonight. Uh, and out of fairness to the residents, I understand that this can be a convoluted and confusing process. So what I would like to do, uh, if the board is inclined to do this, is that we, um, I'll, I'll, I'll go through the process of getting the exhibits just so that they're part of the record and admit it in. Um, but I don't think that we should take a vote on this tonight. I would like to have the opportunity to sit down with these residents along with Supervisor Roberts Lykap, if we can do it this evening, uh, and our solicitor, to explain to them what it is that's actually happening here and then move forward with a vote on this in August. Um, is, is sort of how I kind of envision this kind of going. Um, and I, and, and I don't know, Mr. Solicitor, if you want to answer the question that Supervisor Chalice asked with regards to designating certain portions of it as opposed to the overall structure? Or if you want to?
I mean, my, my feeling is that if there's even just one piece of a structure that has historic value, not the rest, you could just designate that one piece. Like it's a, if the whole house was replaced except for a door that, you know, George Washington walked through, uh, on his way to a battle and that's the only piece that's remaining, I think you could just designate that door as historic. Uh, so, but I would say that if, before you start slicing and dicing a property and say, well, this is historic and this is not, that's what the whole historic, that's what the process is for. So if you designate this property as historic or this structure as historic, there's a process through the Historic Commission to then look at it and say, all right, well, we don't think, uh, this is, uh, this, this, uh, porch qualifies or it's so far gone that we don't think the extraordinary steps should be taken. So I mean, the process that we have post-putting the property on the inventory is flexible, right? So it's, it, it foresees that, uh, idea that, hey, maybe part of this just can't be accomplished reasonably.
That has been my experience in the city of Philadelphia with the Historic Commission there. If it's deemed that the Historic Commission then has, um, they can say, for example, I was involved with a project where it was just the facade and they kept the facade and we built a building around the facade. So, um, I think you're right. I think that, but that's not our place to do that, um, for this. But I agree with, uh, the chairman. I would like, I think that there is some confusion of what this, uh, what this process is. And, um, if the residents want to stay, you know, I'm more than happy to, to have that conversation outside of this hearing if that's, if that deemed, is that deemed responsible or?
Also set forth in the code exactly what the criteria ought to be on the list and what the impacts are on the list.
Okay. Supervisor Chalice, do you have any other questions, concerns?
Um, I mean, I don't have any other questions or concerns. I do support designating this as a historic resource. I think it's clearly meets the criteria and I think some of the things we're talking about aren't part of what we're supposed to be considering for the ordinance. And I also think that if the residents are concerned about what's going to be put there, then having this designated and having a process to slow down the potential demolition or changes is a good thing for the residents as well as the township.
Don't disagree with any of that. I just want to make sure that since we have residents here and there's confusion with regards to the process, that we have a conversation with them um, before we, we take any final vote on this because I personally, I'm not comfortable, uh, taking a vote on it right now. I don't disagree, um, with, with, with what you're saying um, with regards to the development aspect of that, but I want to make sure that everybody understands, uh, you know, where we are on this. Um, so what I will do is I will admit um, T one through T five, that there's no objection. Property owner one's exhibit, which is a letter dated Oc, excuse me, April fifth, twenty twenty-four from the law offices of Margaret A. O'Connor and the Historic Commission's report, which is going to be designated as HC one. And we will, uh, let me go off the record real quick. Mrs. Skora, if, if we're continuing this or keeping this open, do I need to state on the record the next time we're going to have the hearing on this?
Oh, yeah.
If we don't want to re-advertize, okay. All right, Tom, we'll go back on the record. But we're going to keep this open until the August twelfth meeting, which is our next supervisor's meeting, at which time we'll take a vote there. So essentially I'm tabling this, we're keeping this open, so I don't think we need a vote on any of that. This hearing is closed. And the exhibits, I should note, sorry, Tom, the, the exhibits were admitted and the hearing is closed at nine ten. Uh, and for those residents, we'll make ourselves available at the end of this just to go over some of that information for you. Okay. Oh, we have another hearing. We'll open the hearing up at nine ten for fourteen point five conditional use hearing, fourteen Phillips Lane. Uh, this hearing is now open and I will state on the record that it's being continued until August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Skora? Thank you, and this hearing is now closed. Thank you for everything, Tom. I appreciate you and your fast fingers. Um, we'll now move down to fifteen point two, Consider Approving Resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, multi-modal transportation fund grant for Bishop Hollow sidewalks.
They're moved.
There are second-
Second.
By Supervisor Chalice, Mr. Neese, can you just explain this great news for everybody? Fifteen point two?
I can when I get my mic on. Um, so yeah, this, there is a section on Bishop Hollow that goes up to where the girls', um, softball league is. And so, uh, we have a grant right now to extend up the sidewalk down to, uh, Campus Boulevard that runs along this side of the road, uh, the township side of the road, where it stops at the, uh, the Little League and that will take you to that corner. But if you want to go from there up to the girls' softball, uh, you're kind of walking out on Bishop Hollow Road and there's not a good spot. So, uh, this grant would allow us to put a sidewalk in, uh, on the opposite side of the road on Hunter's Run side up to the, uh, girls' softball, which would allow it to be a more walkable, uh, community. Uh, and we're looking at also potential of a connection into, um, the, uh, what's the Stony Brook community, the, where the, the Stony Brook community, there would, the potential, Spring to Point, Spring to, thank you, Spring to Point Estates. Uh, there's a, there's a possible connection into there as well. So people would actually have a safe way to walk and not be walking on Bishop Hollow Road.
That would connect to that sidewalk that's there on that one side?
It, it would connect to the sidewalk that's there on that side, go up that corner.
The side into that development?
Into that development.
Yeah, that one little stretch of sidewalk that-
Yeah.
You guys have to shovel?
Yes.
Awesome.
That would be good. We have the use for that sidewalk.
Any other questions for the township manager? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we need to read this?
Aye.
No, we just did the roses.
Okay.
Um, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Section seventeen, board comment. Do you have any, any board members have any board comment? Section eighteen, public comment. Is there any members of the public who have any public comment in regards to anything related to the agenda or not related to the agenda? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. There is no public comment and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Want me to give these to Tom?
Yeah, please.